I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
Just everybody gets it right.
We'll take a moment for Amy to get into the room.
That's fine.
Not the first.
That doesn't give me a lot of confidence. That's coming from you.
There she is.
Find it in some places.
Where's the flag? He's supposed to bring it. Got it.
Do you read this?
Yes.
Do you read this?
I don't read that. It's the only thing I want.
Do you want this, Jim?
That's okay.
All right, call to order, special meeting agenda, November 7th, 2022 Township of Ocean Planning Board. Amy, can we have a roll call?
Yes.
We did the salute to the flag. So you're ready.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein? Just in time.
Okay. Mr. Defilia?
Here.
Mr. Guthie?
Here.
Dr. Fisher?
Here.
Ms. Close?
Here.
Mr. Weinstein?
Here.
Mr. Beal?
Here.
Mr. Adis?
Here.
Mr. Vadenovic?
Here.
Mr. Harmonica?
Here.
And Chairman DeBette.
Here. The notice of the requirements of open public meeting law for this meeting has been satisfied. A copy of the notice has been sent to the Aspergberg Press and Coaster and filed in the Ocean in the Office of the Aspergberg. Emergency notice. This is... You need to leave. The doorway is this way.
Okay.
All meetings are videotaped, video and audiotaped and shown on the Township of Ocean Community Channel, cable channel, Channel 22 and Verizon FiOS and Channel 77 on cable business. Cell phones must be turned off. If you need to make a call, please make your call outside. Cases carried to November 21st, 2022, NKN Enterprise Holdings Inc., Block 209, Lot 607, 1107, Highway 35, Ocean and Nassian Town, Block 17-01, Lot 8, 107, Adams Avenue, Ocean. That brings us to our special. Floor and Decor Outlets of America Inc., Block 182, Lot 73 and 78, 1502 and 1560, Highway 35, Ocean Zone C-2. This application for preliminary and final site plan is necessary in bulk variances for loading spaces and facade signs in order for floor and decor to move into space formerly occupied by Foodtown in approximately 67,493 square foot retail.
Good evening.
How are you?
Very well, thank you.
Great.
My name is Howard Geneslaw. I am the attorney for Floor and Decor. I'm with the firm Givens PC. First, we'd like to thank you very much for gathering tonight and holding a special meeting, which we very much appreciate so that we can hopefully get this project moving. I thought I'd give you a brief overview of the project, and we have several witnesses. We can see how many of them you actually want to hear from tonight, but by way of an overview, the property-
Why don't you do the overview, and then we'll have our professionals go over their findings, and then we'll figure out if we need to see any witnesses.
Sure, that would be fine.
Maybe the reports may give the overview for you. Mine stated November 1st, applicant is proposing undertake facade and minor site-
Givens is taking the floor. You're taking over.
Yeah, I'm taking over.
There you go.
Improvement to accommodate change of use of the prior Foodtown retail space to a floor covering and home furnishing scale. The shopping center site is in a regular 25.28 acre parcel. I don't think I have to go description. The board members all know the shopping center and what the site looks like. The site is located in the C2 Highway Commercial Zone. There have been numerous applications over the years for the site primarily to allow the site to upgrade and accommodate changing tendency and economic pressures. The current application is intended to allow occupancy of a portion of the northern building that was formerly occupied by Foodtown, including modifications to the layout of the building to accommodate specific needs of the proposed use, modifications of facade to be consistent with the layout modifications and be consistent with the branding image of the floor and decor business, and minor modifications of the parking area to accommodate improved ADA access and future EV make-ready charging stations. Generally, the application is consistent with the intent of the prior approvals with regard to upgrading the appearance and function of the shopping center. The site received planning board approval on May 29th, 2008, which required facade and signage improvements for the southern half of the shopping center and states, quote, "The northern half of the shopping center building is to remain as is," unquote. It goes on to state that board, quote, "suggests that the applicant consider changing the facade of the northern part of the shopping center when practical," unquote. In my opinion, this application is consistent with the board's recommendation as stated in that resolution of approval, in that the applicant is now upgrading an appropriate facade change to the northern building, more specifically, as a part of the resolution compliance for 2008 approval, the applicant submitted a detailed signage plan for the southern half of the shopping center. That plan required all signed lettering to be read. The applicant has submitted a plan that shows that the proposed signed lettering for the floor and decor will be read, as well as providing a thin red strip highlighting the roof line. In my opinion, this carries the signage theme of the southern half of the shopping center through to the northern half. The applicant has proposed a color scheme for the four facades of the building that is complementary to the color scheme of the southern building. The colors, which are Sherwin-Williams, Urban Bronze, Amazing Gray, and Extra White, work well with the colors of the southern building, in my opinion. The applicant will provide the board with chips that show the actual colors. The variances necessary for the proposed development are those for signage and number of loading spaces. With the maximum number of signs, of facade signs per business, the ordinance limits the number of facade signs to one sign per business per street frontage. Since the shopping center is a corner lot, each business is allowed two facade signs. The applicant is proposing a total of five facade signs, four on the front of the building and one on the rear. The total square footage of the four signs on the front facade is approximately 453 square feet. The five signs total 478 square feet. I do not have a major concern regarding this variance. It should be noted that the business takes up approximately three quarters of the northern building. The remaining one quarter of the building is occupied by six storefronts with five existing businesses and one vacant storefront that's likely to be occupied in the near future. These businesses have a total of six facade signs. If the vacant Foodtown space were subdivided into smaller storefronts, the ordinance would permit anywhere from eight to 16 facade signs totaling 912 square feet in area. Maximum facade sign area, the ordinance limits the area of a single facade sign to 150 square feet. The proposed floor and decor sign with logo is 327 square feet in area. As stated above, the total square footage of the four facade signs on the front facade is 453 square feet, which is less than one half of the ordinance that the ordinance would permit if the sign, if the space were saying then into smaller commercial space. The issue with signage is not so much the actual size of the sign, but the scale of the signage versus the size of the building. In this instance, the proposed sign is in scale with the size of the building and would not be inappropriate. It is probable that it would be more visually, more visually appealing than a conforming sign. Number of loading spaces, the ordinance requires a minimum of three loading spaces for the proposed use. The applicant has indicated that only two loading spaces are required and is proposing two loading spaces. There are currently three loading spaces, but if only two are necessary, it makes more sense to finish off the area of the third space in an aesthetic manner while leaving room for a third space should it become necessary for this or another business in the future. The applicant could simply leave three loading spaces in place and not use the third, which would be a much less attractive solution than to eliminate the space and finish off the wall in an attractive manner. Additional comments, there's an existing area in the southern end of the building that includes a pull-off area for temporary vehicle parking. This area does not appear to provide any viable purpose or benefit and could result in traffic conflicts resulting from vehicles exiting this area into the drive aisle. It is not clear as to whether this area was constructed as part of a prior approval or without board approval. The applicant should discuss the potential use of this area so the board can decide whether or not it should be retained. And that's it.
Bennett, why don't we continue with you two?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be more brief than Jim, but-
Thank you.
Planners always talk too much.
That's all right. We don't want to hear you talk that much anymore. So just a couple minor things that I'd like to get some testimony on. Traffic, parking, circulation. We just want to get an understanding of how the site is going to operate with the new use. There's a new customer pickup area, and then there's also a paved drop-off area from the previous use that we need to understand if that's going to be used, how that's going to work. And store manager management, just a brief overview of store manager management. There appears to be really no change to the cover, but just we'll get some description on that. And then I don't believe there are any changes to landscaping and lighting, but if there are any new building mounted lights, we want to know where those are. And there were just a few minor modifications to the plan, some additional details that I wanted to see on there. So if the applicant's amenable to making those changes, then it should be done.
Okay. So in terms of traffic and circulation, are you speaking operationally or engineering circulation or both? Just so I know who I should call up to address that. Okay. Then, so I have three witnesses tonight. The first witness is a company representative who can talk about operational issues. Second witness is our civil engineer, and the third witness is a professional planner. We did submit a written project description that goes through quite a bit of detail in terms of floor and decor, who they are, what they do, hours of operation, timing of deliveries, number of employees, things like that. But I can call up the company witness to talk about how the customer pickup works because that's something that's new and somewhat specific to floor and decor. And if there are any other particular questions regarding the site operation, we can address those too, and then I can move right into the civil engineer to address most of the other items.
Sounds good.
Okay, so let me call up Elizabeth Jackson as the first witness.
You'll have to bring your own care.
I was like, do I bring my own? Okay, hi.
Who's going to do the swearing in?
Gentlemen, there is going to be-
I was waiting.
So tell the truth, tell the truth, tell the truth.
Yes.
Say your full name and spell your last, please.
Elizabeth Jackson, J-A-C-K-S-O-N.
Ms. Jackson, by whom are you employed and in what capacity?
I'm employed by Floor and Decor Outlets of America, and my job title is Construction Design Project Manager.
And what does that actually mean?
So, great question. Basically, I take and when we decide we want to put in a store somewhere and we hope to work with the town, we go through and we try and make sure that we're adhering to what makes sense functionally, operationally, and what makes sense in the setting that we're putting the store in. So I help manage the architects and a lot of our consultants anywhere from when we identify a market to when we break ground.
Great. And Ron and Jim and Bennett probably remember Alexander from some of our earlier TRM meetings, and Alexander is not here tonight.
Yes, he just got married, so I'm standing in for him.
So Elizabeth is standing in for Alexander tonight, which is why you're seeing a different face. So you're familiar with the operation of floor and decor stores?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So could you describe for the board how the customer pickup works, both the "I'm Here" spaces when someone orders online, as well as spaces for larger orders, like an entire pallet, for example?
Yeah, absolutely. So with the "I'm Here," and I don't know, did we want to put that up so that-
We can put up the site plan. The engineer is going to talk to the site plan.
Why don't we mark them? Right, Amy?
Yeah.
Sure, so why don't we-
Angle it a little bit.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we mark the aerial, because I think we'll be talking about that in a minute. Why don't we mark that as A1, and then we'll mark the site plan as A2. And when-
And then is there another board behind it?
Yes, we have them, some elevations.
There's building elevation as well, which we can mark too. I'm not sure if we're going to need that, but I'm happy to mark that at this point as well.
Okay, and what's on the other side of that tractor?
We've prepared a truck turn just in case that was necessary as well.
In case there was a question.
Yeah. There you go.
Like to come prepared.
Is it okay if I go up?
Prepared is good.
Yeah, so why don't you go up and referring to what we marked as Exhibit A2, which is the site plan prepared by Kim Lee Horn, just double check, I believe that's dated October 18th? On the revision date?
October 18th.
October 18th, okay. So please refer to the exhibit and explain how this all works.
I'm going to try and make sure everybody can see here. Okay. So this is going to hopefully be our store, and basically back here, we're going to have two, we're going to have two basically CPU pickup spots along with proposed "I'm Here" parking. How it works is that our CPU customer pickup is that if you put an order online, our products are heavy, right? They're kind of cumbersome. So the idea is that you're going to go have our store associates pick them out for you, and then when you, they'll let you know when it's ready to be picked up. So you drive up. A lot of us have dealt with this throughout the pandemic, right? So you go and you pick, you let them know you're there, you walk inside, you are greeted by somebody at a desk, and you say, hey, I'm here for this order. So then they tell you, drive your car over here where it's partially internal, and then they have a forklift come and load up your car for you. It's usually for safety reasons, one to two cars at a time. We never try and overlap them because we don't want anybody to potentially get hurt. We don't want any vehicles to get damaged, anything like that. For smaller orders, it's just like at your local grocery store, for instance, where you can order ahead, and then you can call a phone number once you arrive, and you park in the "I'm Here" space. You tell them what space you're in. They bring out your smaller.
So that essentially is how the deliveries work. Why don't we put up, since we marked it, why don't we put up the building elevation? Maybe we didn't mark it yet, but we'll mark it now as A3. And this gives you an idea of what the facade of the building will look like, where the signage would go. There was a comment earlier about color samples. These are the color samples that are reflected on the plan? Is that correct?
Yes, so these are our corporate branding colors, basically, and I personally think they're beautiful because they look really good in any time of day, right? So below you're going to have something called Urbane Bronze, which is the starkest color, and then above that is the Amazing Gray. And then lastly, you'll have this high reflective white, as it's called. And then for the accents, which he was mentioning about for the signage and repeating that throughout the center, we have something called Real Red. Would you like, need a pass, ma'am?
Sure. Let me pass them around. So I had a number of other operational topics. They're pretty much all covered in the written project description that was submitted, so I don't know that we need to go through those in a lot of detail, but if there's any operational questions, this would be the person who can address them, hopefully.
I got a question. So do you guys, is it, you also sell to commercial guys, you know, is it just retail? Or do you have a whole commercial side of things? Are there big flooring installers coming in and picking up, you know, large quantities, things like that?
We can, I believe it's, I hope I get this proportion right. It's about 40% is professional customers and our pro members, and then, and that can include commercial. And then 60% is our DIYers, so our homeowners who come and use our products to update their homes.
So you don't sell wholesale to other companies, right? No, you just, you sell the contractors?
Yes.
So you're selling basically to the final user?
Yes, sorry, that's a better way of clarifying, yes.
You have a time, I know, I know it's a tough question, but I mean, how quick does somebody get loaded up? How quick does somebody get in and out, you know?
It can depend on the size of the order, but I've seen anywhere from where they're really quick, I mean, within five minutes, say, hey, turn back your car in, and they're ready to go. I've seen as much as, or as high as 15 minutes. Much more than that, then you're going to overweight the vehicle that's being used, so you can't load up too much all at once.
So the model is bring them in, get them in, get them out type of thing?
As safely as we can, yes.
Got you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I know you addressed it just before. When a customer comes to pick it up and their items, whether it's a big shopping or a little, where, do they come in front of the building?
So where the, let me see.
That was on the backside of the building you were pointing to.
Yes, so it's on the backside of the building.
Maybe just take a minute and kind of orient everyone to where the front and the side of the parking lot is, just so everyone is on the same page in terms of what we're pointing out there on the plan.
Or maybe even on the aerial.
Yeah, on the aerial, that's a great idea.
Mike, which works better for?
Aerial.
Aerial, aerial it is. So this corresponds to that. Okay. So this is going to be in the front of the store. Back here is going to be where the proposed CPU area is. And there's actually, when you're, when you're asking, over at the side, there's a separate CPU entrance, so it's just a regular door that people walk in, and that's where the desk is. And then next to that is going to be the roll-up doors, which, let's see, this can hurt.
And they would park by that door? I'm just trying to get the flow of how it'll work.
Yes, so they have the option of parking in the "I'm Here" spaces if they like, and then they have the regular parking.
So are they taking over, there's a realtor in the back there, are they taking that space too?
No.
It's just a Foodtown space.
During the original TRM, they wanted to have loading and unloading in the front, and we all as a group thought that was not a safe situation.
So the realtor is still there, right? The bagel store is still there, right?
Right.
GNC is still there.
Around the back.
All those, so just in the corner of that space, right?
In the back.
Okay, is there a loading area there? I thought the loading area was more of like a jog in the middle of that building.
No.
Well, I think we're talking about two different things. The jog, I think you're referring to in the middle is the tractor-trailer loading for incoming deliveries.
Right.
This is sort of the alcove, which is more toward the corner, which would be modified. And when our engineer gets up and testifies with the site plan, she can point out in more detail exactly how the circulation will work.
Okay, I agree.
But we're talking about two different things, two different locations, I think.
So the tractor-trailer spot is still going to stay where it is?
Essentially, yes, yes.
So what's the, so what's the general vibe? Is it, there aren't giving many people parking here, or is there a lot of people that come in and kind of look around? Like, what's the, what's the general, like, inflow and outflow of this?
So why don't you give an overview from the store perspective, and then our engineer, who's firm-prepared trip generation study, can give you a brief summary of that.
No, I think, just to forget about the actual preparation, I meant just as, how does the store kind of operate? Does it operate like a Home Depot where people kind of just go and go out, or people kind of shop around, or what's the vibe?
So you could say that it was kind of separated into a couple different types, right? So you have customers who come in, they know exactly what they want, they've looked it up online, they're going in, they, they know, write what they want, and they get in, get out. Those are usually kind of our pro premier members. Then you also have the ones who are going in, they haven't been there before, or they're just generally thinking, hey, I may want to update, do something nice to my house, right? So when they go in, they're not really sure what they're looking for. The nice thing is that we have something called, it's a design center, so it's design inspiration there. We have in-house designers who help them and say, hey, what are you thinking about? And they might be like, oh my gosh, my bathroom is from the 1940s and has carpet in it, right? So then our designers work with them and say, oh, okay, well, these are the different types of flooring. What's nice is that most of our, most of the products we carry are all in stock. So the idea is that you get to walk around, you get to take samples home that day, and if you want to come back that same day and be like, I'm ready to do this, then they can come in and get loaded up and move out.
I have a quick question. Can you, I know it was in your project description, but can you talk about the truck deliveries, the timing and everything?
Yeah, so on average, we, we, on average, it's about 40 deliveries a week. So up to five, sometimes six deliveries a day. They're usually spaced about two hours apart. On a rare occasion, you know, if somebody has problems getting to the store, they hit traffic, and we have a slight overlap, that's why we allow, or we would prefer to have those two spaces, just in case there's that slight overlap. So when the delivery drivers show up with their trucks, they get out, they start doing, they open up, and then our store members come in and help unload it.
And then the, I know we talked about this at our technical review meeting, normally you do overnight deliveries where you, where you receive, you know, your shipments of pallets of tile. And because of the proximity to the residential right behind the building, this is going to be during the day, correct?
Yes, yes.
And then how does that work with actually getting everything onto the floor? Is that, is that still done at night, like, while customers aren't there, or?
Mostly, yes, just because of the size, and we want to be as safe as possible. So with the size of our product and the weight, we try and keep it at minimal traffic when customers are in the store.
Okay.
Which ways are the tractor-trailers coming in to the site?
Do you want to put that?
Maybe we'll have our engineer talk about that when she comes up.
Just was curious.
Yeah, the truck studies, studies they do are so great.
As it relates to the traffic that you just, is it more or less than what the Foodtown's there right now?
Far less.
It's less than what is-
But they may vary.
All right.
The trip generation and the parking demand are substantially less than for a grocery store.
I would assume the parking would be, but I just, that amount of truck traffic, I wasn't sure. I would assume a food, food store would take on a lot more trucks than that.
Yeah, I mean, a food store, again, depending on the volume they do, you know, that'll dictate how many tractor-trailer trips there are, and you know, their time of day may differ some, but overall, the traffic that Floor and Decor will generate is far less than the traffic that Foodtown would have generated.
How many employees approximately be working in the store?
It depends. We have different for, and in different departments, it ranges anywhere from, I think, 30 to 60. I think that was, yeah, I'm pretty sure it's 30 to 60. 40 to 60? My apologies, I'm better at that one. So on weekdays, opening at 5:00 PM, we're looking at 25 full-time, 15 part-time. 5:00 PM to closing, 20 full-time, 10 part-time. Weekends, we have 30 full-time on, 20 part-time, and then 25, or that closing, 25 full-time and 15 part-time.
And of course, those can, you know, fluctuate over time as business demands may dictate, but that's generally what they intend to open with.
And where would the, where would the employees park? Do you, will you have designated area for the employees to park?
We don't usually have a specific designated area, so usually we tell them to park towards the back of our designated general parking.
Did you mention hours of operation? I don't know, I missed that.
I believe we're, well, it's 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and then Saturday, it's 8:00 to 7:00. Sunday, we're 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
What's the scope that we're trying to accomplish in this meeting? Is it just give an assessment of how we're feeling about it, or is it that-
We're looking for preliminary and final approval.
Preliminary and final.
We're doing everything, Jeff.
Yeah, we're seeking preliminary and final site plan approval and the four variances that Jim mentioned before, one for loading and three for signs.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
Is there, is there a time of the year that's going to be more busy, that we put a stress on that area that I'm going to worry about?
You know, with the current parking and everything, and you could see if they spoke to you about the trip generation study, but I don't think so because our busiest time, we're pretty even, but our busiest time, if you're going to say, if you're going to, you know, look for one, is going to be the spring kind of summer, when people are busier in their homes or they have more time. So, and those numbers still, I don't think would put a stress on that area.
It would still be less than Foodtown, and you're not going to have the holiday types of peaks that you would have in a grocery store.
Since you mentioned the variance for loading, can you just explain that a little bit? I think the, if I remember correctly, you need three loading spaces based on the requirements, and you're only proposing two. And is that just because the operations only requires that many?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a, there's a third one that's going to be closed off, but it could easily be reactivated at some point in the future if there was ever a need for it, either by floor decor or by some future tenant.
If the board were to act favorably, one of the terms and conditions would be that the major loading from your warehouses would be 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Okay.
Right, yeah, that's what we discussed.
Only certain that's part of the record because of the residents of Middlebrook. We don't want them at 4:00 o'clock in the morning receiving deliveries.
Yes.
Do any of your other floor decors also do daytime deliveries?
Yes, we do have other locations that do that. Please don't ask for a list of them. I won't know that off the top of my head.
How many floor decors are there in the country?
So currently, around 180. And I say around because we are literally, we're in a huge exponential growth phase right now.
What's the closest one to this area?
So there's five in New Jersey currently. There's, let's see if I can get them all, Paramus, Elizabeth, Moorestown, Tom's River, and which one did I leave out? I know I have it in the written description here.
I think I was even on that site.
It's okay. You don't have to delay thinking about it, it's quite all right. Is there any other questions for this witness?
Thank you.
Can we get the traffic rate?
Sure, let's call up our civil engineer who can address traffic circulation.
Thank you all.
Any other questions you might have.
Zombie swear to tell the truth, hold truth, and admit the truth.
Yes.
Full name and spell your last.
Jennifer Oltman, O-L-T-M-A-N.
Could you give the board some background about your employment, your educational background, and your professional licenses?
Sure, my name is Jennifer Oltman, a civil engineer with Kim Lee Horn. I am a 2005 graduate of Juxley University. So I've been practicing civil engineering for about 17 years. Project manager for this project.
And your professional licenses?
Oh, I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey and Pennsylvania.
Excellent, in good standing?
Yes.
Okay. I'm offering Ms. Oltman as an expert in civil engineering, as well as traffic-related issues.
Okay.
So there were some questions that came up earlier about truck circulation in particular. So why don't we start with that? And maybe you can walk the board through how trucks would circulate through the site and where tractor-trailer deliveries would take place.
Sure. So as was previously stated, the truck deliveries will be on the western portion of the site. So we're showing a truck delivery from Deal Road, turning left into site and traveling. This is the current configuration as it stands now, so it will be no change to that. There will be minus one loading docks. This is where the three loading docks were, there will now be two there.
This is the truck plan, right? Which I don't think we've marked yet, so.
I'm sorry, yeah, this is the truck plan, so this is exhibit four.
Why don't we mark that as A4? And could you just read off the title and the plan date, please?
Vehicle maneuvering plan. October 18.
Thank you. Please continue.
So this is the location of the truck turning. We also included an emergency vehicle so that you could see a ladder fire truck entering this area over here and understand that there is no obstruction to that vehicle path.
Just point out to distinguish the area where the customer pickup will be versus where the tractor-trailer unloading will take place.
Sure. So this is the customer pickup area on that corner, back in here. And this is the truck loading area. So if you want to just reorient yourself quickly, you can see on the aerial that this area where the customer pickup is corresponds to this area right here. And this area where the trucks are corresponds to this area right here.
So my first question is that your tractor-trailer is making a left on Deal Road into this parking lot here. I think that that's not a good idea. Is there, is there any suggestion possibly to make an alternative route for the tractor-trailer to get in? I'm concerned because that area.
We actually had discussions at the TRM about that. And one of the discussions was that because of where their tractor-trailer is originating, they may wind up coming up Route 18, getting on Deal Road, going down Deal Road and making a right into the site. Which, that's, it's a little bit better, it's not ideal.
It's better, but it's harder, it's even harder for that to make that turn there too, because there's really not a lot of space on that. And then it's a decline there. And then also, coming the other way, you have the gas station, the convenience store, all that traffic on Deal Road making a left-hand turn is going to block that whole road. Because there is really not a tractor-trailer room to make a left-hand turn.
How did it work previously for food town?
Yeah, well, how did food town do?
Yeah, I think food town did it that way.
Did they come in from the back?
They definitely came, no, they came.
Yeah, that's where the current food town.
But they used to, they used to do night deliveries too?
They used to like all, like, got these three delivered in their heyday three times a day.
I remember sitting there a number of times waiting because they couldn't make the turn, and they'd back up, and then they, you know, it wasn't a K-turn, it was more like a W-turn. You know, boom, 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 right? The problem is, the problem is it's too narrow.
I'm just concerned about you guys coming in and accessing it with your tractor-trailers from that side there. It's much easier for you to access through the parking lot or down towards the end of the site and then come back through the back end of it. It's just something to consider.
Where do the trucks enter the site now?
Yeah, it's our understanding that they enter from that back portion, correct.
Excuse me, we have an expert witness that may be willing to testify. Mr. Silverstein.
Mr. Silverstein is.
Feel free.
Sworn in.
Yeah.
Sure.
Zombie swear to tell the truth, hold truth, and admit the truth.
I do.
Full name?
My name is Robert Silverstein.
And what's your relationship to the property?
I am one of the owners of the Middlebrook property.
So I assume that means you're very familiar with its operation?
I have been familiar with it for pretty much most of my life.
So can you tell us how tractor-trailers access food town?
Most of the tractor-trailers and box trucks would work both, came off of Deal Road, off of 35, and turned left into the westernmost driveway. Some went ahead and pulled into Rustic Drive, which is further, and kind of came back around. But most of them definitely came in through Deal Road at that western entrance.
So this would be no change essentially to what was taking place previously?
It's been that way for 30-something years, I guess.
Just because it's been happening for 30 years doesn't mean that it makes it right either. So my concern is that Deal Road is definitely more congested than it was 30 years ago. You would agree with that, correct?
I would.
Yeah, and it's even more so now. And so that definitely is a concern of mine coming, you know, I don't know. You said 40 deliveries in a day, correct?
No, in a week.
A week.
In a week. So what was food town, how many deliveries was food town?
But again, this is less than food town. So you're talking about a diminished capacity of something that's already bad. So we're actually going in the right direction. I agree with you, it's an awful idea to make the left turn. But at least we're getting it in the right direction where we're getting less traffic that's coming into this.
Is it feasible to take 35 south and turn the right and go past Frank's Big and Tall and come around that way?
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
Is it easier to come down 35, get south, turn in?
The Wendy's.
Wait, is it coming that way, is that easier?
I've seen trucks do both. The Wendy's trucks, which come, tractor-trailers come about twice a day. I would say that's what they do. They turn in off Wendy's, or they go down a little further south and take the next traffic light and come back around.
They would just go straight to the back and?
I mean, honestly speaking, it's been a, it's been a situation where there's never been a great answer for it. Speaking as a landlord there, I don't love that the trucks go through the apartments. There are children there, there's bus stops and stuff, so, you know. But I can't stop that either. So it's just, that's the way food town is always operated. And I agree, sir, that, you know, doesn't make it the best way. But unfortunately, there's only a certain number of paths available for trucks to go and some amount of area for them to go.
Didn't someone say they'd be coming from the west from Route 18 area?
Yes.
I'm sure some.
That was what we had talked about at our technical review meeting, that likely they're coming off of the.
The turnpike, right.
Yeah, turnpike.
Correct.
So it would make sense that they'd be coming from Route 18 and would make the right off of Deal Road eastbound into the site. I would think that that is more, makes more sense because then the truck is facing the right direction to be able to just back right into the loading area. If it comes around the other way, it has to do a full 180-degree turn in the parking lot in the back there, or in the paved area back there by the loading area to be able to get in to unload. So I see the benefit for having trucks enter off of Deal Road.
I, if I may, I don't want to be argumentative or disagree, but coming from 18 and turning right onto Deal Road is far more difficult and time-consuming for the cars going each way than it is coming off 35. My office is right in that corner, and I watch, not all day, but I watch it all the time. And it's very difficult for a truck to come in that way.
So then the alternative then would be coming off of 18 to like 36 down to 35, and then to Deal Road to go, do the left in there, is what you're saying? Instead of making the right?
There is a dedicated left-hand turn lane from Deal Road into that far west access to the shopping center that a tractor-trailer could fit into, so it's out of the flow of traffic. It's longer than a tractor-trailer.
Yeah, the problem isn't that, the problem is when they make the turn, there's usually not enough radius to make the turn. And so they make the turn, and they have to pull back, and then they have to go back in. That's, the problem is that that, the mouth at that area is just too tight.
Yeah. There's actually an 18-wheel truck that comes to the convenience store three, four times a week. And he parks in that middle of the road and leaves his truck there and goes into the convenience store and comes out.
That's what I'm talking about, this is not.
We're not proposing that.
No, no. I'm just saying that it actually happens.
It's a problem that, you know, needs to be really addressed.
But we, I don't complain anymore. And it's approved use in the zone, and the traffic is already, you know, it's not like they're asking for use rights, but if the zoning were, you can't change what it is.
I'm not asking to change anything, I'm just making a suggestion, can we go a different way? Would the applicant be willing to go a different way? Or limit some of their access to that area?
I think we can save what we want here, but truck drivers are going to be truck drivers.
And they're going to do whatever they want to be.
And then, I guess the other question is, are all deliveries from your own store, from your own company? Or do you have outside vendors to deliver?
They're all from floor decor warehouses, right?
They're all from our warehouse, yes.
Okay, so they can control.
And they're all coming from the same place?
They can control. But I don't know which way's better.
I, you know, I mean, I, my concern is, you know, how does that, you know, we're hearing, excuse me, is Mr. Silverstein?
Wrong. Probably people aren't.
He's saying that, you know, the convenience store has got the tractor-trailer parked in the middle of Deal Road. I can't imagine what the other tractor-trailer is going to do when he comes through.
He's not delivering to the, he's going in to get a soda.
Oh, he's going to get a cupcake?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I thought we were delivering.
I actually think I have a solution that'll work.
Go ahead.
And that is if the trucks were to come down and enter the southern entrance to the shopping center, south of Coles, and go in behind Coles, and then go north behind the southern building to the northern building, they could get there. Now, the question is whether when they got there, they could maneuver so that they could back into the loading space.
So they'd be coming all the way.
Yeah, coming in, that's what I was suggesting.
That might be a difficult for truck drivers to understand where their end point is.
When they leave the site, which way did they go when they leave?
I assume they'd be going back to the turnpike, right? They'd be going.
Yeah, they could, they can.
So no, how, the truck is, I got it, they come down Deal, they come down their road and make a right, right into your site, right? You come down, right? They drive straight ahead, they back in, right? They pull in, they unload. How are they leaving the site?
They can leave straight around.
Oh, so they can leave the, correct. They can leave the way we want them to come in, but they can't?
Well, they can make this turn, they can.
They're not making that turn.
Or they can turn around in the area.
They're not making that turn, because there's that big tree outgrown right there that goes right out, right in the middle of the parking lot there. No, 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 you see where that big tree is?
Yes.
There, that's a planer, a big thing that comes out, a jog off of that, off of the back there, isn't it?
That's over here.
Right? And so you can't, that tractor-trailer, he can't go straight and make a big turn in the middle there. He's going to go right out the back end of that.
I think Ms. Jackson has some additional thoughts on this topic.
So, and I'm sorry, is Mr. Benedetto?
You Benedetto.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay. So I'm glad you bring it up, because it's something we want to consider, right? We want to make sure that we're fitting in really well, we're not causing problems, and that we all benefit from this. What happens is usually in the first few weeks, our operations people are incredible, and they're out walking the site. If they see a problem, they're going to want to reconfigure it because of, one, safety, two, liability, and three, we just don't want to upset anybody. In addition, if you'd like, well, I mean, we're always open. So if a complaint were to ever come in, we'd be happy to meet with anybody we need to, to get it addressed and to amend what we need to do. We're very open to feedback, or we're happy to, would take it into advisement. I will say, you know, we had, we had talked about the other things, and like she was saying, I mean, I haven't driven a truck, so I can't completely identify with this. But I can imagine that turn would be really, really hard. That being said, I have no problem bringing it up to our chief executive department, who is our GM, basically, and making sure that it's taken care of. Like, we don't want to cause problems, so.
No, I mean, you know, I want you guys to be successful. I don't, I don't, we're looking, we're looking for you guys to take the space. You know, we just want it to be safe, and we don't want to, there's a problem in our town with overgrowth and infrastructure as well as a result of that. And, you know, we don't want to make it worse, you know, in a sense.
Absolutely.
You know, certainly don't want to make it worse, we want to make it better, you know.
Absolutely, and I mean, if any of you were to notice something, of course, reach out. I'm just, I'm just saying that, like, this can be an ongoing conversation if there is, if an issue does develop. We're not, I don't want us to come in here and be like, oh, no, we won't consider alternate routes. Of course we would if it, if it makes, if we can make it work and it's a better option. I think it's going to be, until we can see it in action, for us, it's going to be hard to know and to demand to our truck drivers, hey, you have to go this way, until we have a little more feedback from them.
Could you widen the entrance driveway there? It looks like there's a sidewalk that kind of ends nowhere. And it could be widened, you know, a few feet to potentially make it an easier right turn.
We need county approval, right? Because Deal Road's a county road.
It's a county road, yes. Deal Road is a county road? Yes, so that would.
Deal Road's not a county road?
Yes.
It's a county road.
No, it's a county road.
Deal Road is not a county road.
It's not.
Ocean's Houcha Bones, Deal.
Oh, my God.
Even better, start over.
That'll help, I'm like, you ready to say?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to say something.
Okay, cool.
Ultimately, this is a much smaller use than food town. Food town was really at its height. Think about the amount of cars coming in and out of there, how many trucks coming in and out of there. I mean, it was an all-day, every-day when food town was really at its peak. I don't, I don't. This has got to be a lot less. I don't, okay, I mean, I, listen, you know, we're all in agreement that we want the best project, right? And so I don't have a problem approving it. I just want to make sure that we get this stuff on the record, you know, the tractor-trailers. I'm a little concerned about it, that's all. all. So, Mr. Silverstein, how many trucks do you think Food Town was really bringing in at the height of its, I mean, I know it's a hard question to go back, but I gotta think they were really...
Oh, yeah, well, they had the three loading docks pretty, pretty full all the time and, and they had box trucks that would pull up on the side and people, and they would be unloading them with dollies and stuff and bringing them in on the side, I think. So I really wouldn't guess how many trucks, but a lot more than they're talking about.
Yeah, so I think we're talking about a whole lot less of use here, and that's just my opinion.
The only, the only part I would say is that, you were saying that, I think you were saying that summertime is more, you know, more action going.
A little more, yes.
Okay, well, summertime is our problem on Deal Road, right? With traffic. So, I don't know, I'm not sure if there's a way to maybe have recommended hours for certain months when it gets there.
So what about that? If they, is there a way to make that entrance wider?
Yeah, I mean, anything can be done.
Well, to a large extent, that would be up to Mr. Silverstein since that's not within our demise premises.
I think there's an elevation problem there with making that wider because from the curb, it goes pretty straight down.
There should be utilities as well.
I'm not sure exactly...
How, let me ask you this question. Why can't we make that entrance only an entrance? So now that it's not, you can't vacate that area, you can only get into that area.
I have an answer for you, actually.
Oh, I'm sure you do. I can't wait for this.
When Food, when we got approved, I don't know what year it was, to expand Food Town and do some other things there, there was a lot of discussion about that area, which we did not like at all, but the, and the professionals at that time came up with this design and part of the problem was that they didn't want people on the easterly side exit, they didn't want them turning left.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
So the, the westerly one was designed actually to only turn left.
That's correct, yes.
So, could it, could it be changed? I would imagine it could be.
So that, since I live west of that entrance, how do I get out of that traffic center?
You're at 35 and you go to the next light and you take the jug handle, you come back. New Jersey's got jug handles every light.
We gotta go out the front.
No, you don't even have to go out the front. You don't even have to go out the front, you go down where the movie theater is, that back road, you turn left, right by the, by the rehab place, you make a left at the light and you come back. It's no big deal, and I'm sure you've done it. Because Deal Road is backed up and you can't make a left.
So it just came to somebody, another comment at the beginning.
I'm really...
We were talking about that, if it's, if it...
I don't need any flaring, I'm okay.
If during the summertime, because that's where most, that's where the uptick is, right? So I assume that's where more deliveries are, is that, is that a good assessment?
Yes and no, I mean, you could say that.
Okay.
I mean, if you're asking whether it's statistically significant, I'm not sure.
Here are the two roads that get jammed up, the Deal Road and West Park during the summertime, right?
Yeah, but again, it's, it's less usage.
Yeah.
Everything that we're talking about doing, I'm all for improving it, I'm for imploding Deal Road, I'm for widening this to the end of the earth, I'm for stopping cars going left, right, going out of there, it's a mess, I get it. All of it they're talking about today is less than there right now.
I understand that, yeah.
So I don't understand why asking them to decrease or increase their hours during the summer has anything to do with this. I would imagine they're a large corporation, they probably have set standard hours and they'd probably like to keep them. I don't know that having all of this other conversation about, again, it's less usage, so I think we're beating a dead horse here.
Do you think we try to solve the problem that doesn't really exist?
Well, I just wanted to...
I agree there's a problem, but I don't know, A, we can solve it and B...
How big the problem is.
Right, like...
Let's talk about the trip generation for a minute and give you a little summary so you can kind of get a sense what kind of changes we're talking about.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we did, we did perform a trip generation study based on supermarket versus their store, you're at a minus, a negative 576 cars of what it was previously for customers, so you're talking over 500...
That's based on ITE, correct?
Oh, yes, based on NJDOT, HAPS data, the, so you're looking at a much less regular customer cars than it was with the supermarket. So you would also have the deliveries that the super, you know, less than what the supermarket had versus, as well as the customer base.
So it would be a substantial reduction in the number of trips compared to what a supermarket would typically generate, you know, maybe not when Food Town was going out of business, but when Food Town was doing well.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that, and my only concern is the tractor-trailer issue.
So I, I think there were a few other comments, lighting I think was one that you'd like to ask to address.
Any additional lighting?
No additional site lighting, right, but there's some building mounted lights, I believe, that are shown on the elevation, but there's no new site lighting.
There's no new site lighting and the existing building mounted lights will be reused.
And those are not pointed towards, they're away from the residential as they stand right now?
Correct. We try and pretend like we live in the backyard wherever we go.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So yes, we do wall packs mounted, which you can see just kind of on here, just keep it lit, make sure, we try and discourage any poor behavior, just keep it lit and happy without being disturbing.
And is all up lighting, down lighting?
Down lighting.
It's all down lighting.
And what things have we not covered yet? I think you had one or two others that we didn't hit yet.
Stormwater management?
So there is no change in impervious pervious surface, so there's no change of what it was existing.
Okay. I know there was a new proposed sewer connection, can you talk about that?
There was a new proposed sewer connection just for the location of the interior floor plan.
Okay.
Yes.
The...
There's no increase in capacity.
The bathroom or whatever was on the other side of the store and instead of rerouting the whole line underneath the concrete slab, you just put a new, new connection to the other side of the building?
Yes, absolutely, but no increase in any capacity to the sewer line.
Okay. The make-ready parking spaces, are those, those are gonna be pre-wired and conduit set up for the EV charging stations?
Yes.
Where will those be?
They'll be located in the front of the store, here, so on the aerial, sorry.
I'm sorry, I thought you were...
Oh, no, so on the aerial, they will be in the front of the store, but you can see it on the shaded on this plan.
And how many were there gonna be?
Twelve.
Great, thank you.
That's, that's per state statute.
Yes, as required.
Can you talk about the, that drop-off area in the front, it's that trapezoidal shape of the gray hatch?
Yeah, so that exists there today, I'm not sure what the ideal purpose of that was.
Is that, is that gonna be used or anything?
Pickup for the groceries, so you pull in there, you get your groceries.
Yeah, I think actually, the last time I was there, I think there's a pharmacy that's still in...
It's still operating, right?
That's still there, so some people do park there to get to the pharmacy. We do not plan to utilize that space, it can be blocked off with a bollard or...
Could you just change, because you're, the plan shows you reconstructing all that sidewalk, could you just bump the curb line out so it's just a uniform width of sidewalk in the front? And just eliminate that?
I mean, it's possible, I mean, the, it's existing, the preference would be just leave it unless there's a real objection to it. I suppose it could still be used as a drop-off area, you know, to pull up, drop off your spouse, drop off your kid who works there. If, if there's concerns about it, then we could extend the curb and make it into a, I guess, a landscaped area or something to that effect.
I think that would be a much better solution.
A landscaped area?
Yeah, there is like a planter box that exists there, so that's something that they could move forward with, or we could just remain the area to not be utilized.
Do you think it would cause us leaving it as is? Is there a significant problem that you think would occur?
That wasn't part of the discussions we had of leaving that we're not gonna have anything in the front of the store.
I think the, the concern was that there, people would just kind of pull in there and either park there or pull a U-turn there and kind of conflict with traffic flow in the, along the frontage, you know, with people who are trying to get to other stores. And it just doesn't seem like it's, it's there for any purpose with the new use. And so I, I think that the, the cost to do it is very minimal, especially considering you're already redoing all the curb and all the sidewalk along the frontage there.
And to block it off with bollards is just gonna look very unattractive.
It's gonna be ugly.
We can do landscaping in that particular...
Well, we, we'll, yeah, let's just, we'll extend it and we'll do some landscaping.
What curving are you doing? Are you redoing that whole curb in the front there?
Yes.
Yeah, all the curb in the sidewalk along the front.
The entrance to the store moves down.
Can you show us where you're replacing the curving?
Yeah, right here, so see the darkened portion, like the bold portion right there?
Right.
So that would be, this is the new entrance to the store.
Right.
This would be the sidewalk, this is the ADA ramp for access.
Right.
And then replacing the curb and sidewalk here.
So to extend it out to where that, or just, how about just removing that, why can't they just remove that, isn't there concrete there, like in the middle of the pavement?
Blacktop on the bottom.
Isn't this concrete right here? Isn't that concrete right there? Can't you just remove that concrete and just fill it in with blacktop?
I think it would be better to fill the whole, remove the blacktop and fill it in with concrete and extend the sidewalk, so you have a uniform sidewalk along the front of the building.
Just as another way of skinning it, that's all.
Yeah, I think that my concern, I don't know if it's Ben's concern too, is that you do have a lot of traffic going back and forth.
You do.
And people pull off in there and then they pull out into the traffic.
They do, all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, so eliminating that would be a good idea.
Yeah, we can fill that in with some nice landscaping.
No landscaping, I don't know the main, like, to maintain.
Yeah, I think it's better just to make it concrete.
Concrete gone across the front, otherwise you're not gonna get much watering and it's gonna look...
Is there an objection to doing concrete?
Because it sounds like there is an objection.
Tree box, that's by stormwater.
Like we do in front of the cleaners and the pizza guy.
Yeah, I think the main idea was just we, one was just kind of the aesthetics, it's like, to us, it would look, it would look nice if we did a landscape versus just bringing out that curb.
We, we have a truck.
The problem is, is how is that landscape gonna be maintained?
Well, hold on, Mr. Silverstein, there were two conversations back, I apologize. Mr. Silverstein was answering that question because I really like this idea.
All right, let's hear it.
I, I was just saying that in front of the cleaners, in front of the pizza guy and all that, there's holes in the concrete and we, Middlebrook maintains flowers in there and we plant mums and old things and they ask who waters it and maintains it and we do that as part of the common area.
So in the middle here, could we have continuity through the entire, by adding concrete, but having the flower boxes throughout the whole complex that you would be watering? Is that fair?
I would probably stay down.
Yeah, or could we do mulch with just some shrubbery that would look nice? It's a little easier to maintain.
I like flowers, but yeah, don't have to...
I like green, I like, whatever's green, I'm good with flower shrubbery.
I think the flowers are a better idea because I think the shrubbery in that location is gonna get destroyed during snowplowing.
Okay, that's a fair, that's a great idea.
Tell me what you're doing.
And it's good to be consistent.
Ever gonna maintain that?
In the seasons, we put in flowers.
That's very nice of you.
Yeah, there are existing planters in front of the facility.
Uncreed.
I think that's a much more attractive option and the applicant seems, you know, to encourage, well, sorry, landlord.
Sure.
So what would we call that thing? The drop-off area is gonna be eliminated, right?
Eliminated and then box or greenery that will be maintained by the landlord?
Eliminated, it's gonna be placed with...
And the plan will be revised subject, if the board is comfortable with the subject to bend and I'd like to have it and approving it.
Yeah, so just so we're all clear on what that's gonna be, it's closing off the drop-off area and then replacing it with what exactly?
With concrete and, and planting, like, boxes, I would say spaces.
Probably a combination of concrete sidewalk and then basically holes in that concrete sidewalk to do plantings in.
Yeah, to mimic exactly what.
That are consistent with, with the other part.
Yeah, it'll look better if they all match.
Yeah.
So, what do I think?
Next one.
Next problem. The oil landscaping of the west side.
Okay, so I know in the engineering report under miscellaneous, there were a number of recommended plan revisions for details, those are all fine, and I'm not sure if there's anything else that we didn't address yet.
Did you touch all, all the points?
Well, the, the signs, you said there's four versus one, so that's...
Correct, we're gonna have some planning testimony on that, but yes, there are four proposed signs in the front and then one in the back to identify the customer pickup area. And then swapping out the panel on the existing freestanding sign, which is just changing the panel that's there with a new one.
And you have no problem with the signs, right?
No, I know.
Do we need, anyone need to see the signs?
Yeah, so it's like stone, wood.
Right, anyone, anyone...
Yeah, we can put up the exhibit again to...
Nope.
We don't need to go outside.
Well, I will put this up here just in case anybody was too shy to say they want to see it.
And the signs in the rear, which would be seen by the Middlebrook president, that would be on a timer, just that.
Yes.
Yeah, it would go off an hour after closing, exactly, so it would not be a 24-hour type thing.
All signs or just the...
Just the one on the back.
Just the one on the back.
That would be affecting the rest of it.
Is there one more thing? The existing pavement in the parking lot, I think that, I saw on the plan that it's planned to just be like seal coated after all the work is done?
Correct.
Okay.
And restryft.
Okay.
So I don't think I have anything else on engineering or traffic unless the board has any questions.
Anyone else have any other questions?
Nope. Good, okay, then I would call up our professional planner to sum up and give you an overview of the planning proofs in support of the variances that we've requested.
Ms. Reddick, tell the truth, all the truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Your name, please?
My name is Donna Holmquist, H-O-L-M-Q-V-I-S-T. I'm the CEO and founder of Preferred Planning Group. My business address is 110 Chestnut Ridge Road, Suite 192, Montville, New Jersey.
And can you give the board the benefit, please, of your educational background, your licensing and your occupation, please?
Yes, in terms of my education, I have an undergraduate degree from Rutgers University and master of urban planning from NYU. I've been licensed by the state of New Jersey as a professional planner since 1990, that's also the year I was admitted into the American Institute of Certified Planners. I've been working as a planning consultant since 1985 and I founded my own firm in 2018, Preferred Planning Group. So I've been qualified as an expert in front of more than 100 communities, most recently places like Parsippany where I single-handedly destroyed a billboard application, a shining moment protecting an historic property. And I'm also on the Board of Planning Advisors for the NJPO that you get the newsletter and I'm, I'm speaking at the League of Municipalities on Whispering Woods hearings, for anyone who's interested.
So Donna is offered as an expert in professional planning. I would ask if you could just give the board a brief overview as to the justification and support of the variances that have been requested.
Okay, I did prepare three exhibits, so maybe we'll just put the sign context one up there.
Sure, yeah, that makes sense. We'll skip the other two. I think the board has a pretty good understanding of the surrounding land uses and the zoning, so we'll just move right to the third exhibit, which is a sign context exhibit prepared by Preferred Planning Group dated October 23rd, 2022. That would be A5. There we go.
Thank you. So we identified this as Figure Three.
Figure Three, okay. Exhibit A5, thank you.
So what we, what we did was, we took an aerial, we subscribed to a service called Near Map. The aerial imagery that we used as our base map is from July 11th, 2022. We, of course, looked at the land use and the zoning, that's on my other two exhibits, but I'll skip that since the board is familiar with that. Looking right at the signage that is proposed, I just want to remind you, it's probably in Mr. Higgins' review, that the total signage for the Food Town, looking at each individual sign, and that was in the signed package that was distributed for the board, there was photographs of the existing Food Town wall signage with the dimensions in there. So that's where I'm pulling this information from. The total signage with the banners for Food Town was 420.69 square feet, and of course, they had five wall signs. Florin Decor is proposing four signs on the front of the building at 452.35 square feet combined, and our rear customer pickup sign is 25.65. So we're at a total, all facades, 478 square feet as compared to Food Town, which was 420.69. So not a huge difference there. I also want to point out to the board that there is a section in your ordinance, it's Section 21-44.3B7, that talks about the planning board having some leeway to permit signs on more than one facade of a building, including facades that lack a public entrance, which are our rear facade wood. If we demonstrate to the board that the additional signage promotes a community interest in facilitating the identification of the building. Obviously, there was extensive discussion about the circulation aspects of this property and the function of the customer pickup area. I personally was out at the site, taking note of the very mature hedge that exists buffering the subject site to the west as against the Middlebrook Garden Apartment Complex. I estimated that existing greenery or evergreen vegetation at at least 10 feet from where I was standing. I also walked around to the apartment building as if I were looking out my window at eye level, and I do not believe that this customer pickup sign will be visible to those residents. So I don't think there will be any detrimental impact. As our attorney mentioned, we have variances for the loading spaces, there was extensive testimony on that, and the hours of operation not going to disturb the adjoining residential community. The number of facade signs on our front-facing building, less than the Food Town that preceded us, and as I understand, was there for some 40, 40 years at least. Our signage on the front facade occupies a little more than 10% of the front facade. That's, in my planning opinion, completely reasonable. And Mr. Higgins, your planner, has pointed out that if the space were not used by Florin Decor as one user and were instead occupied by multiple users, that 300 linear foot of building facade could accommodate double the square footage of signage that Florin Decor is proposing. So I think there's a benefit there of having this occupant replace the Food Town. So I just want to highlight on my exhibit, the types of things we looked at, we outlined the study area in pink, and we tried to take it looking at what was immediately adjoining our property, what was opposite our site on Deal Road and also Route 35, and what's adjoining us to the south. So that's how we derived that study area. And we have noted some of the unusual and very unique characteristics of this property, which I believe supports the signage, in addition to the fact that Mr. Higgins pointed out that it complements the architecture, that the color scheme is compatible with prior resolutions of approval. I just want to note for you that we have about a 300-plus-foot setback from Route 35 as indicated by the arrows. Of course, the red star, the red asterisk, is where Florin Decor will be located. We looked at the distances also for decision-making for motorists because this is a little different than a supermarket. We're not pulling from a local frequent user type activity where people are doing their food marketing regularly. This is a little more of a regional attraction, if you will. And so we were looking at the distances of the Gores going northbound and southbound on Route 35 and what the decision time is based on the 50 mile an hour, and it's anywhere from two seconds to 10 seconds to decide what you're doing. If you're going northbound, are you going to go for that jug handle? And I think the signage will indeed promote safety and enable people to spot the location of this store in a safer manner. The property shown as vacant on the opposite side of Route 35 is in fact a township property that has some off-premise sign, and I understand from reading Mr. Higgins' many reexaminations of the master plan going back to 1995, there was concern over our traffic congestion in the area, and that was why the township felt it appropriate to move to preclude development on that site. Coming southbound on Route 35, we have a lane merge where we actually drop a lane there, also causing distraction for drivers. And of course, we have the Out Parcels that are occupied by the PNC Bank that fronts on Route 35, as well as the Wendy's. That also impedes visibility coming northbound and southbound on Route 35. So again, we want signage that is compatible with the architecture of the building, promotes identification of the building, and improves what you all saw as the existing condition. So we are consistent and compatible with the master plan goals and objectives. Specifically, I pulled out three of them. One is promote a desirable visual environment through creative, technical, and good civic design arrangements. Again, we're upgrading the building exterior, integrating the signage with the architecture, complementary color scheme, not just with Florin Decor, but with the other signage in the building. Secondly, improve the function and appearance of the Route 35 corridor. I think the architectural elevations do a good job of illustrating that, again, blending the design of the signage with the architecture. The plan also advances two purposes of planning per the MLUL. That would be 4055D-2, that section of the land use law. Subsection A, encouraging municipal action for the appropriate use of land to promote the public health, safety, and welfare. And subsection I, promoting a desirable visual environment. These variances are justified in terms of the negative criteria as a C2 variance where the benefits outweigh the detriments. I just pointed out for your consideration the two aspects of the purposes of planning that are advanced by having this signage. I also explained to you the northbound and southbound features that impact visibility, therefore.
May I make a pause? I believe, I know the board well enough, I believe that from their faces, they brought out all of the issues that they wish to, councilor, if you're okay, the chair is okay. Are there any questions that you would have for this time?
Thank you.
That concludes our presentation. I think this is an application that really gives the board an opportunity to approve something that will allow a vacant space to be utilized and to be utilized in a way that will have much less impacts than the use that preceded it. So if there are any other questions for any of the witnesses, we'd be happy to address them, and if not, we thank you for your attention.
Mark, what are the, what are the things that you have written down?
Condition? Basically, you know, in addition to what they gave us as their operation, specifically, they're not going to have any deliveries, deliveries only between 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM.
Correct.
Number one. And number two, they're going to fill in the, that area, drop-off area.
The drop-off area.
To continue the sidewalk and curving and put a flower bed, similar to the ones further up the shopping center.
Any further?
I don't, I don't.
And the light at the rear will be turned off.
I got that one too, I'm sorry.
After one hour.
One hour after closing.
Close this.
The light in the rear of the building facing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Yes.
Can I have a second?
Second.
We don't have to do a roll call for that, for closing the public hearing, do we?
Board of adjustment does, so.
Okay, so we're doing that.
Did you ask if there's anybody from the public?
Anybody from the public have any comment? There's nobody here from the public.
Well, on the record now that there's no one.
Okay, well, no one is here from the public to make a comment. Roll call.
Mr. DeFilia.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Dr. Fisher.
Yes.
Ms. Plousses.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Mr. Veal.
Yes.
Mr. Adis.
Yes.
Mr. Badnovich.
Yes.
Mr. Carmonica.
Yes.
Chairman de Benaveto.
Yes. All right, I make a positive resolution for this applicant based on the conditions that.
You're going for a final site plan approval with the four variances that have been requested?
Correct.
Okay.
And subject to the conditions.
I'll say.
Roll call.
Mr. DeFilia.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Dr. Fisher.
Yes.
Ms. Plousses.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
Mr. Veal.
Yes.
Mr. Adis.
Yes.
Mr. Badnovich.
Yes.
Mr. Carmonica.
Yes.
Chairman de Benaveto.
Yes. All right, let's close the meeting.
I make a motion to close the meeting.
I have a second. A favor. That's the best issue already.